Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Rule call. Toth?
Here.
Obendorf?
Here.
Echol? Marquette?
Here.
Ruse? Heben?
Here.
Reynolds?
Here.
Motion to excuse Ms. Echol.
Second.
All those in favor of excusing Mrs. Echol, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion to excuse Mr. Ruse?
Second.
All those in favor of excusing Mr. Ruse, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Is there a motion to approve the minutes for the May 9, 2022, regular Rosford City Council meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor of approving the minutes of May the 9th, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Is there a motion to approve the agenda for the May 23, 2022, regular Rosford City Council meeting?
Mayor, we're going to add, uh, facilities, uh, public works and economic development and zoning, so three more committee reports.
That's it?
And an executive session at 6:00 a.m. to discuss personnel.
All right, you're going to have to help me. I didn't write any of that down.
Yep, I will.
Motion to approve as amended.
Second.
All those in favor of approving the agenda as amended, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Okay, committee reports, finance and insurance.
Oh, that Mr. Ruse is here?
Yes.
Hi guys, sorry. Just in time. Uh, give me one second. All right, Finance Committee meeting met on May 19th. Uh, all members were in attendance along with Ms. Murray and Ms. Boyle. Uh, the Fire Chief and Assistant Fire Chief were in attendance for the first few minutes to ask for a supplement for the purchase of radios to the capital improvement fund as this purchase was not known, uh, early in the budget process. Current radios will be obsolete in Rosford as they be able to piggyback on the city of Toledo term contract with, which is about a 40% savings. Everyone supported it. Uh, the committee reviewed the 2023 initial revenue, uh, estimate for submission to council on June 13th for the first reading and the second reading, June 22nd, uh, for passage. This is the re- annual requirement for Wood County. Uh, we need to submit by July 20th. As discussed prior, these estimates are conservative and will continue to be, uh, adjusted moving forward. The revenue will be updated on, in October after the third quarter receipts are realized and then during the budget process to ensure the best revenue estimates for next year. Uh, the investment income update, uh, this is our meter, um, investment group. Uh, we invested initially $5 million, uh, now we've invested additional $5 million for a total of $15 million. Interest rates are increasing, so it's a great time, uh, for beginning our investments. As investments mature, there will likely be, uh, higher rates available. Star Ohio itself is up, uh, to .81% from .08% last year. Uh, we, the committee reviewed and discussed the April 22 financial information, including income tax, tax revenue versus expenditures in our comparison to 2021, as well as our unencumbered cash balance. Uh, the administration presented, uh, pending items to appropriate money for the general fund, unencumbered cash balance on June 13th, as well as future items to save money for 2023 to 2025. That was it.
Okay, any comments or questions? All right.
Yes, I was late.
Recreation.
Thank you, Mayor. Rosford Parks and Recreation Committee for 50922. In attendance, Toby Ladisma, Caroline Zuckowski-Echol, myself, Dan Wilburn, Dawn Burks, and Macy Ben. Menos called to order at 5:15 p.m. Eagle Scout Project. The Recreation Committee saw two Eagle Scout project presentations. First one was Jacob Van Horn, who plans to refurbish the park shelter at the bottom of John Folcheck Park. He's intending to power wash the concrete, sand, and paint the pavilion and project plan for the summer. Second presentation was by Grace Echol. Plans to add information boards throughout Island View Park, creating information boards with wildlife information photos, placing the boards around the walking trail project planned for the summer also. Recreation software. Mr. Ladisma has been researching a new recreation software for the Recreation Center. This software will allow people to register for programs, reserve facilities, sign up for memberships, and pay online. He invited all Recreation Board, uh, to watch a demo on May the 11th. Capital Improvement Projects. Mr. Ladisma gave an update on the Recreation Center heaves. The city received a proposal, design and create the scope of, of work for the building. Veterans Park Restroom Concession Stand. Building is currently being designed and is planned to go back out to bid this midsummer. Project must be completed by 12:31. Polling location. The Recreation Center has a polling location for the city of Rosford on May the 3rd. The gym of the Recreation Center would be closed down for the event, but the rest of the facility would remain open. There are no issues for the events. Uh, the Recreation Center was given notice of potential for an August 2 election. Summer programs. The T-ball programs have 52 kids pre-registered for the program. The Coach Pitch Program has 60 kids pre-registered for the program. Next meeting will be 6:13, starting at 5:15 in the council chambers. Meeting was adjourned at 5:50.
Okay, any comments or questions? Okay, we're going to go to Public Works.
Public Works Committee meeting, May 5th, uh, May 5th, 2022, 4 o'clock at the Mark Zuckowski zoning building. Public Works Committee met at the Mark Zuckowski zoning building on May 5th at 4:00. In attendance were Allison Murray, Brenna Reynolds, Tyler Kolb, Todd Odette, and myself. We started off going over the agenda. Uh, the structure over Route 65 south of Rite Aid is to be replaced by ODOT in 2024 and in this process of determining the structure type. The city has requested an architectural slash historical look with lighting since it is one of our gateways into town. The paving program Phase 1 is out for bid with bid opening scheduled for May 24th, 2022. Talked about the possible relocation of the Public Works to the Wales Road Campus and renovate the old Public Works area for the Police Department equipment parking. Crossroads Roundabout at Sportsman's Drive is to begin around June 20th, 2022. The Daimeling Lime City improvements are 60% designed, and we also discussed the tree clearing along Route 65 south of the Stop &amp; Shop. The meeting adjourned at 4:30 p.m.
Okay, any comments or questions? Facilities, Parks, and Marina.
Uh, we met Thursday, May 5th. Sorry, these, uh, minutes weren't available last meeting. The Rosford Facilities, Parks, and Marina Committee met on Thursday, May 5th, 2022 at 3:00 p.m. at the Zuckowski Safety Planning and Zoning Annex. In attendance were Greg Marquette, Robert Ruse, Bob Toth, Todd Odette, Tyler Kolb, Brianna Reynolds, and Allison Murray. Allison informed the committee that the city was awarded a Clean Vessels Act Marina Grant that had been submitted back in 2018 in the amount of $256,980 for the installation of a new 50-foot-long angled floating dock with a new pump-out station. The committee discussed the fact that the cost for this project would be undoubtedly gone over, up over the past four years and asked Allison to contact ODNR to inquire about any additional funds that may be available due to the recent inflation of construction projects. Allison will contact ODNR and keep the committee updated. Todd Odette discussed the status of 106 investigations at Indian Hills School. The grid searched under a few items that will be further studied as their authenticity. It is anticipated that the city will be allowed to develop at least the front 13 acres of this site. Todd will keep the committee posted on the final report on the site. Council Marquette told the committee he would still like to pursue possibly purchasing 545 and 527 Glenwood Road for a possible park campus. Allison will get the property in question and praise and work with the city legal team to move forward. The committee inquired how the estimates for renovations to the council chambers are going. Allison discussed how it had been difficult to get contractors out to provide estimates as everyone is so busy with the work right now. Todd talked about how we might want to consider renovating the entire municipal building instead of just the council chambers. Allison added that she would prefer we renovate council chambers and then work on moving Public Works out to Wales Road facility so that the current Public Works area can be utilized for police, fire, and storage. Allison talked about the issues with the fountain in front of City Hall as she was getting an estimate on what it would cost to make the fountain down, take the fountain down, and repurpose that area as a splash-type water feature. This would not be a splash pad with the buckets, colors, and spraying, but a water feature that had jets that shoot water up and kids could run through it to cool off in the summer. This would be a huge improvement over the current ill-functioning fountain and would make kids happy here in Rosford. Todd Odette spoke about the status of the Recreation Center exterior installation, insulation, and finishing system. Project that we have, that we have it under design and will soon be going out for bid. Todd also updated the committee on the status of Vets Park Concession Stand restroom shower facility. It too is under design and will be out for bid in the next month with completion by fall. Mr. Ruse suggested we look at taking the old rest rooms down on top of the hill at the same time the concession stand is being built. Committee adjourned at 3:55.
All right, any comments or questions? Okay, Economic Development.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I'm going to try to summarize this the best I can because it's almost three pages. So, uh, May 19th, Economic Development and Zoning met. In attendance was myself, Mr. Marquette, Mr. Ruse, Ms. Murray, Mr. Odette, Kevin Heben, Mark Zuckowski, and Mayor Neil McKinnon. Economic Development, uh, zoning map should be updated in June of 2022. Stormwater utility, a citywide template and, uh, maintenance plan developed for utilization. Carpenter's Union Pond, Union Pond, sorry. Crossroads Traffic Impact Study, uh, is, uh, the update is complete. Indian Hills Elementary, uh, concluded environmental surveys, final stages excavation. Uh, the final report is being prepared. Route 20 Mobility Study, ODOT to improve mobility along US 20 up to Lime City, uh, to accommodate the crossroads in Amazon. Also addressed bicycle, pedestrian, and bus mobility. Citywide Watershed Improvement Study, uh, the scope development and RFP are underway. Area-wide traffic planning to be addressed under the TIT application submitted on March 28th. Uh, Phase 2 of the Crossroads Transportation Improvement Program to include Innovation Industrial Park was also submitted on March 28th. Uh, we plan to be notified by May 27th on the application status. In the crossroads, excuse me, Big Lots is open. Perrysburg Animal Hospital is in the final stages of construction, and Murfree Tractor groundbreaking is June 22nd of this year. Innovation Commerce Center, uh, Skanel, the, the Skanel construction, earthwork is done. Road construction, site drainage, building foundations and wall panels for the first structure underway. Uh, on to zoning. Mr. Zuckowski reported to us many things that he proposed. I'll go through them, uh, pretty quickly here. Basically, he wants to revise and standardize the penalty sections of the following codes: 194, 521, 555, 726, 905, 921, 1134.04. Uh, he suggested that the penalties to be progressive as frequency per property increases. Um, the committee requested that Mark and Kevin draft a proposal to present to the committee at the next zoning meeting. Alley guidelines, add alley guidelines to Rosford Municipal Code, right-of-way, storage of trash cans, alley brush and weeds, alley blight, trash receptacles, trash litter and junk, alley fences and alley fence maintenance, parking in alleyways and exceptions. Uh, revised section code of Rosford Municipal Code 726, which is the rental registration and use of standard penalty section proposed. Uh, he wanted to eliminate the following. 726.04, which is the interior and exterior inspections. 726.05, which is the self-certification inspection program. 726.06, third-party inspection, and replace 726.08, which is the enforcement. Also add contractor, uh, registration requirement to the municipal code to include penalties for failure to register. Again, the committee asked Mr. Zuckowski and Mr. Kevin Heben to work on these proposed changes and updates and present to the committee in phases upon completion. Meeting adjourned.
Any comments or questions?
I went through that pretty quick. Is there any, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. Is there any questions or anything?
Tonight is a, is a very special night. Um, we're gaining, uh, one of the top law enforcement officers in Northwest Ohio. Trey Farabee is actually coming, uh, to Rosford from the Wood County Sheriff's Department where he was a sergeant there. The other gentleman that, uh, we're promoting tonight to be the first lieutenant in the history of the Rosford Police Department, and it couldn't have, uh, we couldn't have picked a better guy. Craig Revelle is an outstanding individual, and there's a reason why we have guests here tonight because of the love and respect, uh, that he has for his fellow officers and likewise. So Trey, uh, you want to go first?
Welcome. Here, I'll tell you what. You'll get on that side of the microphone.
All right.
And the family will get behind you and next to you. Todd, you want to come over here? Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Trey Farabee.
I, Trey Farabee.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
That I shall support the Constitution.
That I shall support the Constitution.
And laws of the state of Ohio.
And the laws of the state of Ohio.
The Charter of the great city of Rosford.
The Charter of the great city of Rosford.
And that I shall faithfully.
And I shall faithfully.
Honestly.
Honestly.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge the duties of.
Discharge the duties of.
Police officer.
Police officer.
For the great city of Rosford, Ohio.
For the great city of Rosford, Ohio.
Welcome aboard. That was amazing. We'll get a picture with you guys. I don't want to, yeah, I don't want to drop it either. That'd be a bad first. That's my buddy Darren. Paige is, you know, Darren. Well, you might not know him. Welcome.
I, I just want to thank the administration and city council for making a financial commitment to, to the police department. Um, as you can see, it, it's bringing in, um, you know, more qualified applicants, and we couldn't be more thrilled than to have Trey. He's got 12 years' experience, and like the mayor said, he's leaving a supervisor position from the county, uh, to join us. So if, if, if your commitment didn't come to us, that wouldn't be possible. All right, we just appreciate it. Thank you.
Craig? Rock star? Loves attention.
Yeah. Flushed and red.
You guys want to come up?
When Craig and I, uh, first started out and met years ago, uh, we have the same color hair. That's changed. He still has his hair and I don't.
I'm working my way up there though.
Looking good. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Craig A. Revelle.
I, Craig A. Revelle.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I shall support the Constitution.
That I shall support the Constitution.
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
And that of the state of Ohio.
And that of the state of Ohio.
That I will obey the laws.
That I will obey the laws.
And ordinances.
And ordinances.
Of the great city of Rosford.
Of the great city of Rosford.
Familiarize myself.
Familiarize myself.
With and be obedient.
With and be obedient.
To the rules and regulations.
To the rules and regulations.
And orders.
And orders.
Of the great city of Rosford.
Of the great city of Rosford.
And faithfully serve the city of Rosford.
And faithfully serve the city of Rosford.
And the discharge of my duties.
And discharge of my duties.
As a lieutenant.
As a lieutenant.
To the best of my knowledge.
To the best of my knowledge.
And ability.
And ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Todd, you want to get in there? Yeah, you want to come up? Yeah, yeah.
On behalf of myself and the Rosford City Council and all the citizens of the great city of Rosford, thank you for coming out tonight to witness this and show your support.
Thank you, guys.
Does he get a fancy jacket now, too?
We got to have his, uh, we got to have his family put his bars on.
Yes.
Get a picture of that. While they're doing that, I, if I could say that, you know, Craig's been here for four and a half years. There's no what, you know, we, I took this idea of a, of a, another leadership position to, to Allison Murray, probably, what, Allison, two years ago? Um, and then to Safety Committee, probably a year and a half ago. We put a lot of time and thought and effort into it, um, and we decided to go inside first before we looked outside. Craig, Craig's earned the, the respect of, of the department, of, from me. Uh, I don't know anyone that has more integrity, honesty, uh, character is unmatched. And like I said, he's earned the respect of everybody in the department, and I'm sure he's going to do an excellent job. So thanks, Craig.
Thank you. Thank you, chief.
Putting their boot in here on, high school.
We got Josh here.
Yeah.
Josh, did you bring the magic suitcase?
I got help bandage in my pocket.
All right, guys. Watch out for the jugular. It's all good. Again, thank you. Congratulations. Thanks for coming out. Fashion, how are you? Omni Fiber.
How you doing, Omni Five?
Yeah. Did I skip something?
Hi, good evening, everyone. Mayor McKinnon, members of the council and city leaders. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to come up and speak to you. What I'd like to do is I'd like to just announce that Omni Fiber, we are looking at your city for an expansion of broadband network. Omni Fiber is a broadband telecommunications company based out of Cincinnati, Ohio, 411 Vine Street, Cincinnati, Ohio. We are local to Ohio. And what we're looking at is cities your size, approximately 50 throughout the state of Ohio, to expand full fiber optic network into your city. We're looking to invest about $3.5 million to upgrade the network in your city so that you have an option, your residents have an option, your businesses have an option, to have a faster speed, more reliable, and a better value cost-wise of internet, telephone, and video service. So we're eager to look at your city. We're kind of filling the hole in the donut with federal funds provided for your county residents to increase their speeds. It leaves you kind of in a, in a hole, in, in the middle of the donut where your funding only comes from your incumbent or from individuals and companies like us. So we're excited that we can look at your city to improve and provide fiber optics to your city.
Anybody have any comments or questions? Mr. Marquette?
Yeah, so I have a AT&amp;T now for my internet.
Yes, sir.
You come into Rosford and I want to do business with you. What's, what am I going to pay? And what do I have to do to make that happen?
Absolutely. Our construction process, we are currently in the design of your city now. We'll be presenting both a high-level design and a low-level design to your city, uh, service members so that we can see exactly where things are mapped out. Your incumbent cable operator, your incumbent telephone lines, your sewer, your water, all the different utilities that you have. We'll go through that mapping process, and then, once we begin our construction, we anticipate that the construction timeframe for your city will take somewhere between six and nine months to fully map out and fully install fiber. We will utilize your existing utility infrastructure. For example, your telephone poles that are used today to put most of your services. Where those exist, that's where we attach. We have agreements with, throughout the state of Ohio, with FirstEnergy, with AEP, and other utility providers. So we'll be doing that. When it comes time for your residents to be able to say, now you can sign up, they'll have that option to go on our website or call us for service, and it's an easy transition. We can then bury a fiber optic line straight to the side of their home. It's very simple. The pricing is more economical. Your current options with your current provider, if you look at the 400 megabit per second service, typically it would be about half is what you'd pay. So a better value, plus you're getting fiber optic speeds which are more reliable. There's less network architecture that has a place, take place because it's glass. It is not a metal product, so therefore atmospheric distortion or atmospheric oxidation, things like that that happen with water intrusion, you do not have that with fiber optics. So a much more robust service.
I have a question. I'm currently with AT&amp;T like, uh, Mr. Marquette is, and it seems like each month when I get my bill, it's a little bit more. And, uh, I wondered how your company, is that going to be the usual procedure and policy of your company? That it increases a little bit each time?
That is not our wish, absolutely. We understand that there are prices that change throughout, uh, that time, but our goal is simplified pricing where it's a flat fee. There are no hidden fees. We don't charge for installation. We don't have contracts. So all of those things are things you currently may be experiencing, but also when it comes to internet, we don't have data caps.
In regards to like a service call, if somebody needs to come out, will you have people located in this area?
Yes, sir. We sure will. We sure will. There are several other cities, uh, surrounding you that I, I won't name at this time, but several other cities we're also in discussions with. So there will be local presence to be able to handle trouble calls, installations, outages, all of those things.
Okay, thank you.
Will your service calls be by your own people or will you contract them out?
Initially, it will be by contractor as we build up in your area, and then over time, it'll be internal.
Go ahead. Uh, for Mr. Heben, our franchise fee, does that come into play because they are doing cable?
No, I, I actually, actually Allison talked about that. So if council would recall, um, maybe about four or five years ago, there was a, a new, um, statute passed down in Columbus which got rid of franchise agreements. So what we have, what the council enacted is what's called the VoIP, Voice Over Internet, where we can, the idea was they, they, they didn't want a city just to franchise with one person because that's a monopoly or one entity. So it's now open to everybody, including, uh, these, these gentlemen. And if they were to come into Rosford, there is a fee that I'm sure Kelly will be able to. If you don't pay Kelly, you got to be very careful. So there's a fee that, that they'll be paying the city that is in lieu of the franchise agreement.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
We're excited for you to install your system here.
We are excited to, and thank you. We look forward to partnering with the community and also being help, able to help with economic development, community partnership, and bringing greater service to the community.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, uh, should we make a motion to go into executive session?
Move to go into executive session for the purposes of personnel.
Second.
Vote on the motion to go in an executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel. Heben?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Toth?
Aye.
Obendorf?
Aye.
This, uh, coming weekend is Memorial Day weekend. I want to thank all service members. I want to thank all veterans, and I truly want to thank, uh, the, uh, families and the soldiers and airmen and seamen who gave the ultimate sacrifice. Correspondents, Mr. Watchful?
I have one piece of correspondence, Mayor, which is, uh, a little late. It's a memo to Detective Sergeant Craig Revelle from Chief Kitzler dated May 19th. Detective Sergeant Revelle, I would like to take this opportunity to recognize you for your outstanding police work on May 3rd, 2022. for your outstanding police work on May 3rd, 2022. During the week prior, a local factory was experiencing thefts from their employees' vehicles, which included two handguns. Conducted surveillance in the area, were able to observe the miscreant in the act of breaking into another vehicle at the same location and take him into custody. This arrest also solved other theft cases in our surrounding communities. Your hard work, professionalism, and perseverance are an example for all of our officers to follow. Keep up the great work. And now he's Lieutenant.
All right. Introduction of ordinances. Is there a motion to read ordinance 22-18 by title only?
All those in favor of reading by title only, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? 2022-18 is an ordinance authorizing the adoption of the crossroads access policy. This is the second reading.
Is there a reason to not pass this this evening?
Move to suspend the third reading of 2022-18.
Does any one of the audience have a problem with us passing this this evening, or any questions in regards to it? No.
All those in favor of suspending with the third reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Move for adoption.
Second.
Vote on the motion to adopt ordinance 2022-18. Obidorf?
Aye.
Toth?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Heben?
Aye.
Bruce?
Aye.
Marquette?
Aye.
Echol?
Aye.
Is there a motion to read ordinance 2022-19 by title only?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor of reading by title only, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? 2022-19 is an ordinance accepting a grant from the Ohio Department of Transportation for road improvements on Glenwood Road and declaring an emergency. This is the second reading.
Mr. Heben?
Allison, at the last meeting, this is the one you wanted us to wait on. Do you want us to?
We don't have to.
Is there a time schedule for this project?
No, that's why there's no, I had an agreement with the Department of Transportation on how we use it, so the time constraint is no longer.
Okay. I just want to make sure that the parking situation is?
This is for Glenwood Road. This one's for Glenwood Road.
Farther out Glenwood Road?
Near the innovation.
Oh, okay. Never mind.
I was thinking, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I mean, wrong end.
Motion to suspend with the third reading.
Does anyone in the audience have a problem with us passing this this evening, or any questions in regards to it?
Erin Crawford, 544 Stevens. I just like some more information about what this project is, please.
Todd?
It's not, there's no project identified. Originally, the grant agreement was for terminally, that is terminally going in, but it's going to be used elsewhere on the site for public infrastructure.
You know where the project's going up on Glenwood Road? It's, that's the location.
So, infrastructure, meaning utilities and ditches and things?
Most likely road.
Roads, access roads? Okay. Okay. Well, we're not talking about any kinds of changes to intersection at this time?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
All those in favor of suspending with the third reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Move to declare ordinance 2022-19 an emergency.
Second. All those in favor of declaring an emergency, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Move to adopt.
Second. Vote on the motion to adopt 2022-19. Heben?
Aye.
Bruce?
Aye.
Marquette?
Aye.
Echol?
Aye.
Obidorf?
Aye.
Toth?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Heben?
Aye.
Bruce?
Aye.
Marquette?
Aye.
Echol?
Aye.
Is there a motion to read ordinance 2022-20 by title only?
So moved.
Can I say something?
Yes.
We need to amend this. There is a?
Who's second in it?
I did. I did.
You weren't going to let me read by title first. The first word.
Me, I'm sorry.
All those in favor of reading by title only, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? 2022-20 is an ordinance authorizing the administration to take the necessary steps to purchase a certain parcel of real estate. This is the first reading.
Allison?
There is a mistake in Section 1, plus we need it amended. The mayor and I did speak with the individual that will be selling it, and they would like the price to be $40,000.
This is the parking lot that council talked about behind dogs.
So, that would be?
So, is $40,000 the amendment you'd like to make?
Yes.
Okay.
If council wishes.
If council wishes.
What I'd like to see if you could is amend the ordinance to do $40,000, and then discuss whether you want to pay that amount or go through with this, so.
Move to amend Section 1 to $40,000. Second.
Vote on the motion to amend Section 1, changing $30,000 to $40,000. Echol?
Aye.
Obidorf?
Aye.
Toth?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Heben?
Aye.
Bruce?
Aye.
Marquette?
Aye.
Echol?
Aye.
Is there a motion to read ordinance 2022-19 by title only?
So moved. Second. All those in favor of reading by title only, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Move to declare ordinance 2022-19 an emergency.
Second. All those in favor of declaring an emergency, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Move to adopt.
Second. Vote on the motion to adopt 2022-19. Heben?
Aye.
Bruce?
Aye.
Marquette?
Aye.
Echol?
Aye.
Is there a motion to read ordinance 2022-20 by title only?
So moved.
Can I say something?
Yes.
We need to amend this. There is a?
Who's second in it?
I did. I did.
You weren't going to let me read by title first. The first word.
Me, I'm sorry.
All those in favor of reading by title only, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? 2022-20 is an ordinance authorizing the administration to take the necessary steps to purchase a certain parcel of real estate. This is the first reading.
Allison?
There is a mistake in Section 1, plus we need it amended. The mayor and I did speak with the individual that will be selling it, and they would like the price to be $40,000.
This is the parking lot that council talked about behind dogs.
So, that would be?
So, is $40,000 the amendment you'd like to make?
Yes.
Okay.
If council wishes.
If council wishes.
What I'd like to see if you could is amend the ordinance to do $40,000, and then discuss whether you want to pay that amount or go through with this, so.
Move to amend Section 1 to $40,000. Second.
Vote on the motion to amend Section 1, changing $30,000 to $40,000. Echol?
Aye.
Obidorf?
Aye.
Toth?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Heben?
Aye.
Bruce?
Aye.
Marquette?
Aye.
Echol?
Aye.
Marquette?
Aye.
Echol?
A graphic, or what portion? This is a bad one here, but this is the picture. I can pull it up on the? There it is. And we would split it right here.
What is the reason for the price increase?
She said that she got a deal because we're splitting that away from the rest of it, and in order to make her deal, she would like to sell this for $40,000 to the city.
If council chooses, this could, this is an item for executive session if you would like to go into executive session to discuss.
I would, to be honest.
I move we go to executive session to discuss.
Purchase of real estate.
Did you make the motion?
I made the motion. Second. Thank you.
Vote on the motion to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing real estate. Echol?
Aye.
Obidorf?
Aye.
Toth?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Heben?
Aye.
Bruce?
Aye.
Marquette?
Aye.
Echol?
Aye.
Okay. We're at the point where someone needs to suspend with the second and third.
Motion to suspend the second and third reading?
Second.
Does anyone in the audience have a problem with us passing this this evening, or any questions in regards to it? No.
Vote on the motion to suspend with the second and third reading of 2022-20 as amended. Echol?
Aye.
Oh, wait, we're still, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Move to declare an emergency?
Yeah, there's no need for an emergency.
Okay. Move adoption.
Second. Vote on the motion to adopt 2022-20. Echol?
Aye.
Obidorf?
Aye.
Toth?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Heben?
Aye.
Bruce?
Aye.
Marquette?
Aye.
Real quick, before we move on, I wanted to introduce you to the new owner of the dogs. Come on up.
Sure. My name is Courtney. I currently live in Mommy. I did gymnastics here at the Rossford Rec Center for Toledo Turners for quite some time in the day. I have two kids. Why I'm getting into this ice cream business is I started working at Nettie's out in Northwood, Woodville, for, gosh, since I was 14. I've worked at Nettie's for 11 years. Since then, I moved on, and I am the director of Triad Residential where in Mommy, and we serve adults with special needs. My plan is I'm not going to be as hands-on as Grace once was, but I have people who are already in place, ready to take this on. I think it's important I'm going to get the adults with special needs involved with this because community integration is huge, and that's the way of the future. Not saying that they're going to be perfect in making ice cream cones and whatnot, but they're going to be darn good, people who are smiling, who are going to talk, who are going to joke, and that's about it. So?
Welcome.
Sure. Sure.
This is our lawyer, Dr. Kevin Heben.
Hi. Nice to meet you. Nice to meet you.
Greg Marquette.
Nice to meet you.
Caroline Echol.
Hi. Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Larry Obidorf. This is Bob Washell, our clerk.
Nice to meet you.
Hi, I'm Brenna.
Hi.
Chris, pleasure. Welcome to Rossford.
Hi, thank you. And I'll have you talk. Thank you. If we can do anything in your transition or help you keep going, just let us know.
Yeah, for sure.
Again, thank you for investing in our goods.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. I'm excited.
We are excited, too.
Do you have any idea when you're going to open up?
Well?
Next week?
I know. Today?
June 1st.
Very honestly, it kind of was up to the decision that you guys had me as far as the parking lot. With that being said, once that decision is, I'm assuming, sent to the realtor and Grace, we can set up closing, depending how long closing takes, will depend on how quick we go.
Do you have a name yet?
I don't. I'd like to, I was going to keep the name, but with that being said, there's different things that I have to do with the I and F's and whatnot. So, I may keep the dogs, I may take a G O, I may add apostrophe, something. So, just getting creative with that, and then we'll have like the corporate name that I can have, whatever, you know, and then just dogs are there.
Gotcha. Well, thank you again.
So, yeah, thank you. Thank you.
Is there a motion to read ordinance 2022-22 by title only?
So moved. 21.
I'm sorry, 21.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor of reading the ordinance by title only, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? 2022-21 is an ordinance to approve current replacement pages to the Rossford Municipal Code and declaring an emergency. This is a first reading.
Allison?
This is housekeeping. It's when we get the update to the screen book every year. So, if you can do it tonight, you can do it in two more reads, it doesn't really matter.
Let's go. It's just housekeeping. I'll motion to suspend with the second and third reading.
Second.
Is there any one in the audience that has a problem with us passing this this evening, or any questions in regards to it? No.
All those in favor of suspending with the second and third reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Move to declare 2022-13 an emergency? I'm sorry, 23? Apologize.
All those in favor of declaring an emergency, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Vote on the motion to adopt 2022-23. Heben?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Toth?
Aye.
Obidorf?
Aye.
Echol?
Aye.
Marquette?
Aye.
Bruce?
Aye.
Okay, introduction of resolutions. Is there a motion to read Resolution 2022-14 by title only?
So moved. Second. All those in favor of reading by title only, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? 2022-14 is a resolution authorizing the city administrator to submit an application for the Brownfield, Ohio demolition grant program with the Ohio Department of Development for the Brownfield, Ohio Demolition Grant Program with the Ohio Department of Development and to declare an emergency. This is a first reading.
Move for suspension of the second and third reading of Resolution 2022-14.
Second. Can I make a comment?
Yeah.
I was just wondering about possibly having another committee of the whole meeting for Indian Hills, the same way we did with Eagle Point, but also maybe to address the Eagle Point demolition as well.
You can do that. For June?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Chris.
I also, I spoke with Allison about this. Even if this grant is approved, if we decide that we're not going to, to raise Indian Hills, we can give it back with no penalty. So unlike the C-MAG grants that we have for roundabouts, if we return this grant, it doesn't affect our standing at all, so.
All right.
So I'll second.
Okay, is there any one in the audience that would have a problem with us passing this this evening or any questions in regards to it? No?
She, she already seconded.
Oh, okay.
Brenna already seconded.
I didn't hear.
We're good, yep.
Nobody in the audience?
Nope.
All those in favor of suspending with the second and third reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Move to declare Resolution 2022-14 an emergency?
Second.
All those in favor of declaring that emergency, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Move for adoption of Resolution 2022-14.
Second.
Vote on the motion to adopt. Bruce?
Aye.
Heben?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Toth?
Aye.
Obendorf?
Aye.
Echol?
Aye.
Marquette?
Aye.
Council remarks. Mr. Toth?
Just want to make sure everybody has a safe and pleasant Memorial Day weekend and thank the veterans that never made it home.
Mr. Obendorf? Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to congratulate all of the regional track qualifiers, which will be participating this weekend, right? Four-by-800 meter team made it, the Dylan McCann in the two-mile, and especially in Long Jim, Claire Logan, who set a new record, district record and a school record. And that school record goes way, way, way back to Beverly Beard.
1977.
1977, when I was still coaching track. I remember Beverly breaking it that day. Congratulations.
Claire Logan is the granddaughter of Sue Pinsky, the owner of Interstate. So she went to All Saints and grew up here in town, so it's exciting to see her succeed. The four-by, I can't tell you for sure the names, so I better not. But congratulations to all those kids, they did a good job and best of luck for them at regionals this upcoming week.
Awesome. Mr. Marquette?
I have nothing.
Mr. Bruce?
Nope.
Heben?
I just wanted to thank Tyler and the guys and the Rossford Marina Guards. I drive down there almost every day, whether it be to have breakfast or early dinner and I always drive on both sides and it's so clean. I drove down there just this morning and, or maybe it was yesterday morning, and they're out there cleaning off the docks, the Marina Guards, and they just do a fantastic job. And I saw your guys down there this week, or late last week, a few times mowing the lawn and it's, it's just pristine down there, so thank you so much for all your hard work.
Ms. Reynolds?
Nothing for me.
All right, audience remarks. Do you guys want to go since, you didn't, you didn't realize we switched the times of the council meetings, did you?
I'm, I'm sorry, Vince Crawford with Waste Management, I thought the meeting started at seven, so.
Sorry about that.
I'll be quick because obviously you guys started at six, so you can go home and enjoy the sunlight. So first, just want to say it's good to see you all in person and I was thinking the last time I saw you was over Zoom meeting, so it's so nice to be able to get back. And the reason, I just wanted to give you a couple of little quick updates and also introduce you to our district manager, Beth Zazinski, so she can say a couple of words and get to meet you. But just to jump into waste management, waste management's no longer waste management. We're now known as WM. Why is that? We want to be known not as a trash hauling. That's what we do, that's a primary piece of our business, but we want to be known as an environmental solution provider because we do so much more now than just hauling trash. And, and some of the big initiatives that we have, our biggest one essentially is becoming, trying to become carbon neutral. So the compressed natural gas trucks that we run pretty much have almost zero emissions compared to a diesel truck. And we are now the largest heavy equipment fleet in, in North America running on compressed natural gas. Another initiative that the company's doing is most of our landfills, not all of them, but we're trying to capture the methane out of, out of the landfills and turn that either into natural gas that we can use to fuel those trucks, or it's going to run through a generator and turn into electricity that we can send back to the grid. We're putting, or developing solar farms on our closed landfills. We have old landfills that are closed up and they're just basically grass mountains and it's a perfect place to put a solar field. You know, these initiatives that we're working on are so our company can at some point become neutral energy. All the energy that we use to run the trucks or that we use to light the facilities or use the phones, that we're going to offset that with energy that we're producing. We're also in the, basically in the coast where you have really big cities, we're now working with some organics where we take the organics material, and I don't quite understand this, but it's a pretty neat process, and we break that down and then turn that into a slurry. This then goes into a biofuel whatever, and it is becoming a gas component to also produce electricity. So it's pretty amazing and that's the future of where the company's going because, you know, we want to have a sustainable tomorrow, so that's what we're working for. And so we want to be known as WM. So most of, all of our literature and everything will now be changed over to just WM, kind of like UPS or AT&amp;T, that was the whole marketing reason behind it, but I like to let people know the, the reason why. After being there for 20 years, it's still hard for me not to say hi, I'm Vince from Waste Management, but it, you know, that's where we're going. And then on, on the industry side, just real quickly, where the company, what the company's been really focusing on is driver retention, right? We all know that have, getting new employees today is very difficult, so we need to be the best recruiter and we need to be the best retainer of that talent once we get a hold of it. So a couple of things that the company has done, serious wage analysis for every one of our hauling districts, every one of our hourly employees, so we can be the best paid company, so we want those drivers to come to us. Consistent recruitment and then even overstaffing in some of our places, you know, for so many years, we would run really lean, just the number of people that we absolutely needed. Now, we need to have more people because unfortunately, too many people are quickly exiting the work field and we want to have those people in place and ready to go. And then transitioning to what we already have in Rossford is the automated truck.